This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to ask all of you to mute your mics before I start the meeting, please. Thank you. Pursuant to Section 551.127 of the Texas Government Code and in conjunction with the guidance and provisions provided by the Governor of Texas in the Declaration of Disaster and Subsequent Executive Orders, altering certain Open Meeting Act requirements and ordering that gatherings of more than ten people shall be avoided, the City Council of the City of Denison, Texas will conduct the meeting by video teleconference in order to advance the public goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, to slow the spread of the coronavirus COVID-19. To declare a quorum, we'll ask Ms. Wallantine for a roll call.
Councilmember Crowley?
Present.
Councilmember Hander?
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Present.
Councilmember Greenleaf?
Present.
Mayor Janet Gott?
Present.
Councilmember J.C. Doty?
Present.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Present.
City Manager Judd Rex?
Present.
And City Attorney Julie Fort.
Present.
All right.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Raymond England, Trinity Lighthouse Church. Pastor England? Pastor England?
Thank you, Mayor. May we pray. Father God, thank you for the comfort we receive from your word at times such as these. You have promised us in the Psalms that God is our refuge, God is our strength, a very present help in trouble. God, our world is in trouble. Our nation, our state, our city is in trouble. Father God, we humbly ask you in these troubled times, would you be that very present help? Because you are that present help, therefore we will not fear, because you've not given us a spirit of fear, but a power of love and of a sound mind. So, Lord, may we use that sound mind to navigate through these unprecedented times. Give us wisdom to make good decisions. I pray for the doctors, the nurses, the aides, the first responders who are on the front lines in this war against an unseen enemy. I pray for the mayor, the city council persons tonight, to have your peace, your courage, and wisdom to lead our city through this season. Lord, help us to keep calm and carry on. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tonight, we have some very special guests that are going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. We have with us Ms. Libby Lay and Ms. Ally Adams. And if you will leave your mics muted, we will be able to hear them as they are leading us in our pledge. Ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one and indivisible. On the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much, ladies. You did such a great job. In regards to public comments, the public was permitted to offer public comments by email to the city clerk to be received no later than 4:30 p.m. today, Monday, May 4, 2020. Ms. Wallantine did not receive any emails, therefore no public comments have been received with regard to any agenda item. The consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Hander?
Second.
Adams?
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Mayor Protem Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five, public hearings. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for an amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 28, to specify how discretionary land use applications are deemed filed. Ms. Murray?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Okay, there we go. The first public hearing, this is an amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 28, to specify how discretionary land use applications are deemed filed and furthers consistency with state law. This is in regards to H.Bill 3167. This amendment specifies how and when a discretionary item is determined to be filed, tying to the adequacy of the application materials. And this is in our zoning code. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this change on April 14, 2020. I'm available to answer any questions you have, and this is a public hearing.
Questions for Ms. Murray? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance of the proposed amendment to the Denison Municipal Code, Chapter 28, and more particularly described in the City Council Agenda Report for the meeting in May 4, 2020.
Mayor, second. Spiegel?
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for an amendment to Chapter 2 and the zoning code, Chapter 28, to provide for consistency with state law. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. This second public hearing is in regards to changing Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Authorities, to change the quorum for the Planning and Zoning Commission from five people to three members or alternates. And that will constitute a quorum. The other change is going to be deleting in Chapter 28 the same provision and just having it in Chapter 2. This will reduce the risk of meeting cancellations in the past, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this after meeting on the 14th of April and recommend approval. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murray? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance of the proposed amendments to Denison Municipal Code, Chapters 2 and 28, as more particularly described in the City Council Agenda Report for the meeting in May 4, 2020.
Second, Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for an amendment to the subdivision code, Chapter 22, to provide for consistency with state law. Ms. Murray?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one is also a housekeeping item related to the recent adoption of H.Bill 3167 regarding Chapter 22 or subdivision procedures. The state of Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 212 and 232, were amended in 2019 by this House bill. Processing time for a filed application is strictly regulated once an application is determined to be officially filed. This amendment defines when that occurs and the prerequisite steps to be deemed officially filed. Without this amendment, applicants may not have the benefit of sufficient city review and guidance prior to a final action. The Planning and Zoning Department is currently creating a structure and tools to establish procedures for processing land use applications, and it will support that effort. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval at their April 14 meeting, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Murray? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
A new station alert has arrived.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance of the proposed amendment to the Denison Municipal Code, Chapter 22, and more particularly as described in the City Council Agenda Report for May 4, 2020.
Second, Spiegel.
There was a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending the zoning code, Chapter 28, regarding waste disposal design and sitting standards applicable to all land uses. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 28, regarding waste disposal, the screening design, the placement and access standards. This amendment improves the design quality of these visible accessory structures and allows consideration early during the review to simplify the process. Currently, this only applies to residential land use, and now this will require non-residential land uses to meet the trash enclosure, screening, placement, and design requirements. And this ensures that this process is evaluated early as part of the site plan review process instead of during the engineering building review phase, and this will simplify the process. I have a couple of pictures to show you. This is the most recent dumpster trash enclosure that was built by Urban Air. Also, another recent enclosure, this is the new building at McDonald's, and this is their trash enclosure. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this change at their April 14 meeting, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murray? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance of the proposed amendment to the Denison Municipal Code, Chapter 28, as more particularly described in the City Council Agenda Report for May 4, 2020.
Second, Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an amendment to Segment 4 of Ordinance Number 4786, more commonly known as the Gateway Village Plan Development. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last one from me tonight. Thank you for your patience. This proposed change would reduce required lot width of Segment 4 from 60 feet down to 40 feet, adding additional development flexibility. The current version of the Gateway Village Plan Development, the initial discussions of the design and development of this were agreeable to a minimum of 40 feet. However, it was not included in the text of the original plan development. So, the proposed amendment would allow for the construction of an additional 119 new single-family dwelling units in the reserve, the latest new development of the Gateway Master Plan Village. Currently, it is in final engineering review. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the master and preliminary plat on April 14, a total of 239 units in four phases over 77 acres. The P&amp;Z recommends approval of this change, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Murray? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the proposed amendment, the Ordinance 4786, Gateway Village Plan Development, Height Area and Special Regulations, D, Segment 4, Area Regulations, A, 2, Minimum Lot Width.
Second, Hander.
There is a motion by Councilmember Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Murray, thank you very much. Items six, items for individual consideration. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year agreement with Daytrium V.A. technology to upgrade the city's existing data backup solution to include instant disaster recovery and improved ransomware protection. Mr. Montgomery?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Josh Montgomery, the IT Director for the City of Denison. This evening, I am here to speak to how we can improve the city's posture regarding disaster recovery and ransomware prevention. Since 2016, we've seen a 700% increase in ransomware attacks, and this has cost $11.5 billion since 2019, according to research firms Gartner and Fortinet. 80% of those companies that have been exposed to ransomware did have to use disaster recovery within 24 months, and they did not meet their recovery time objective and recovery point objectives, or RPO and RTO goals. So, in this graph, you could see that ransomware is the number one cause of disaster recovery events, followed closely by power outages and natural disasters. So, our objectives are to build a more resilient approach to modern threats, encrypt all data at every posture, which includes protecting data that includes city, customer, employee, and vendor information, introduce disaster recovery checks with 30-minute compliance checks, instant recovery of data in the event of ransomware attack, and seamless integration into existing backup infrastructure and practices that the city already follows. So, this is the breakdown of the costs for Daytrium's solution. It includes integration and upgrade of existing city software and hardware, 24/7 support, and 100 hours a year of disaster recovery testing over a five-year term at less than $50,000 per year. Daytrium understands the economic impact of the current pandemic, so they have offered some assistance by providing us significant cost discounts on top of the DIR state contract. They have extended our first payment due date to within 60 days of signing the contract, as long as a purchase order is submitted by May 8. And the next payments would not be due annually until starting in October 28 of 2022. This means that next year's fiscal year budget would not be impacted by these costs. IT also has the ability to offset some of these costs based on our newly implemented yearly mobile device trade-in program. So, Daytrium's the only system on the market that provides full FIPS 140-2 compliant encryption for the entire lifecycle of data. They are HIPAA compliant, GDPR, CGIS, and AES military-grade encryption compliant as well. So, what we can expect from Daytrium is we would be able to instantly recover from anywhere at any point in time with one-click automated recovery. It's important to note that with this service, we would be able to significantly reduce backup windows to as little as minutes. With instant recovery, this solution would provide the city with peace of mind, knowing that when a natural disaster or ransomware event happens, that the impact on business continuity would be substantially reduced compared to our current situation. So, Daytrium has continuous compliance built in. It's called RCO, Recovery Compliance Objective, of every 30 minutes. And basically, their system checks every 30 minutes to make sure that all the data can be recovered within an instant. And we had talked earlier about RPO and RTO. There's a graph at the bottom of this slide that explains that recovery point is how far back you can go to recover data, and recovery time is how long it takes to recover that data. The City of Denison falls into the mean population of entities that currently utilize Daytrium services. These entities include Farmers Branch, Addison, Capel, Plainview, and even the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI. Can I get any questions that council may have?
Questions for Mr. Montgomery? Discussion from council? A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the city manager entering into a five-year agreement with Daytrium V.A.R. technology to upgrade the city's existing data backup solution to include instant disaster recovery and improved ransomware protection.
Second, Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Mayor Protem Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Josh. Item seven, project updates. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and give updates on the Waterloo Lake Trail Grant and the kayak rental station located at Waterloo Lake Regional Park. Mr. Eastwood?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and discuss the Waterloo Trail improvements, as well as other updates happening at Waterloo Trail. Before I get into the budget considerations and the scope of work, I'd like to give you a visual of what the trail improvements look like. Starting with the parking lot, we will be restriping the parking lot at Waterloo Regional Park. From the parking lot on the north side, there's going to be an ADA accessible trail that will loop around down the initial hill. The path of that new trail will make its way through and in between the pond, which is just on the north side. And to give you another visual, there is the pedestrian bridge that is in place. Making its way down the hill or the trail, the new trail will continue and get to the bridge, which will be replaced. Right now, there is a pedestrian bridge, but that one will have different accessibility as well as concrete padding. I think I'm... Thank you. And actually, Chris, can you take me to the next one? We're excited too, because the other side of the trailhead will have specialty concrete bench, as well as various park information, and a really nice lookout area and turnaround point. Next slide, please.
Yes, you want now.
Okay. So, in summary, the scope of work will be 1,530 feet of a 12-foot-wide concrete trail, the installation of two new trailheads, ADA accessible concrete trail, which will be the 12-foot wide, the installation of the new pedestrian bridge, installation of new park signs, a bench, and the new parking lot, striping. So, the budget considerations at this time, the subtotal base cost is roughly $270,000. We've added a 10% contingency of roughly $27,000, which will provide a total of base construction $297,000. Looking at the funding sources, the city was approved for a grant that we applied for back in 2014 and was accepted for the $200,000 by the Texas Park and Wildlife Department. The city decided to put in a little bit more than the 20% match, and then the city added additional dedicated funding, which provided the city funding to $100,000, the total funding cost being $300,000. The city has had the $100,000 set aside for the past four years. To give you a visual, we are actually also excited. We've done a lot of different improvements at Waterloo Park. Keep it in mind that Waterloo Park is just an exceptional feature for our community. The investment we're making with the trail, other things that have happened, including the dog park, playground upgrades, small trail improvements, and also this kayak rental station, is really just us having an effort to continue to invest in the park and enhance those outdoor adventure features. The arrow pointing right here is highlighting what is the kayak rental station, and that is actually in place right now. This will give you a visual what this looks like. So, with that said, the station is in place. There's a few things that we're going to continue to work through as a staff. One, we need to go through user agreements, how that works out, and then some other logistical things. But the kayak feature is something that the community has been excited about for a while, so we know this is a great way for us to bring that forth to the community. With that said, we're going to have two stand-up paddle boards. Each paddle board will have its own designated paddle, as well as a life jacket. We're going to have three single kayaks, each one having its own paddle as well, and designated life jackets, and then three tandem kayaks, which those will obviously have two paddles per kayak and two designated life vests. We're presenting this to the public as a $10-an-hour, two-hour minimum feature. We feel it's a really good, low cost to just bring attention to the kayak rental station, the community, and just another way for us to give back to our community, a feature that is fun for the entire family. Excuse me. And I'm available for any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
When do we plan to go live? Is it already live, or are we... Are we waiting a little bit?
Oh, that's a really good question. So, there's a few pieces in place we need to do. We need to go through the user agreement and get review from Eagle, which we're expecting to get that this week. Beyond that, there's also some software considerations. We want to make sure we work all the bugs out with that. So, that'll come from the vendor, both the user agreement and the software features for us to work through. So, we're hoping that we could get it up later this month, early next month, soon. We'll definitely have it up soon.
Justin, can you explain to me what special concrete is? Justin, can you explain to me what special concrete is?
The specialty concrete is like, during the turnaround, it's like a padded, I guess, pattern that we're looking to do in that particular area. I could definitely get what that makeup is specifically. I don't know what that is.
Okay. I didn't quite understand you. I'm sorry. Did you say it's a special pattern?
Yeah, are you talking about at the turnaround?
Well, in your presentation, you said a specialty concrete. And that was my question. What is a specialty concrete?
Okay, my apologies. As far as the makeup of the actual concrete, I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but I could definitely, you know, definitely get that to you. Beyond that, the turnaround, we are looking for a different pattern that could go in that area. So, that's what we're looking at in that area, but sorry for the confusion.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Eastwood? Well, this is very exciting. We're looking forward to this, Justin.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We're excited as well. Something that we feel that the community is really going to thrive off of these enhancements, including the kayak rental station.
If there are no further questions, this was an information item only and does not require action by the council. There will be no need for an executive session tonight. So, there being no further business to come before this body, the time is 6:32, and we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe, everybody.